Good to go. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Good afternoon, everybody. It is Wednesday, nineteen March twenty twenty five, and this is a regular meeting of the Waterville Valley Select Board. I am Rich Rita and the at the moment, the Chair of the Select Board, and also here today is Wendy Rathberger, a Select Board member, and a hearty welcome to our newest member of the Select Board, Dan Bancroft. Whatever you were told positively about joining them, joining the board, good luck. So we have a pretty hefty post-town meeting agenda as we usually do. And what I'd like to do is first move on to election of officers, so we have to organize ourselves for this for this year.
I nominate Rich Rita to be chair.
I didn't take along at all.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll make it unanimous, and I will nominate Wendy Rathberger as Vice Chair.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so the other thing we need to do, and we can handle it under Board Concerns and Directives, which is where we'll talk about some of the comments you made in an email, Dan, is there are a number of committees and a board that we're also responsible for, so we need to sort ourselves out. And I think I'd like also to propose maybe creating a couple more, so that's something we can discuss, I think, under Board Concerns and and directives. So now that we've reorganized ourselves, I see one person here. Are you here for privilege of the floor or just here to enjoy? Thank you very much. It's glad to have somebody. Okay, let's review and approve the minutes, so that would be the five February twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes. Think Bob weighed in and gave us his comments, which were incorporated since he was a member of the board at the time, Wendy and I did as well. So unless any, Wendy, unless you have any further comment on on the minutes?
No, I would just, you know, I I think they're accurate, and so that's fine. But I would still love to see like the format be consistent, like the tabs in for everything the same and, you know, it would be nice just visually, so you're not, because sometimes, especially when there's a page break and there's an indent that's further than the previous indent, I got a little confused as to what it was pertaining to, so that would just be nice.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February fifth, twenty five.
Second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to new business. So review town meeting voter results. No plans to go down to just?
No, just I provided those for you. It it just gives you the actual vote counts that were reported by the moderator.
And these were posted on the website and the post office too?
I think so.
Yeah, but definitely the website.
Definitely on the website.
They're required.
Yeah.
Okay, and if no one has any further comments on the on the results, we can we could move on. Um, let's move on to municipal solid waste. We have a number of issues. Let's hit the first one, placards. I think the board had decided earlier to move from the windshield stickers to a placard system for authorized uses of the transfer station.
Yeah, and our?
One here somewhere?
Our intent was, this this sheet just shows the potential layout, right, Megan, for the different types of placards. My intent here was to just get the topic in front of you, not to make any final decisions. We we are not settled. It's in the separate packet that she just put down, that one right there. Um, so there's no specific timing that is required. Um, we just want to make sure that um we're still going down the the general direction that you want to go. We would we would advertise the fact that we're making the change, probably do it mid-year sometime in the summer. Um, maybe after the second quarter, water sewer buildings go out so that we can put an app, you know, a an informational sheet in that mailer. The intent here is to replace the little decal system that we started with uh when we initially started the transfer station. Because this will be easier for the property owners to leave at their homes if they have a short-term rental, things like that. People are are adverse to putting a sticker in their windshield. We we don't, we do the same thing down in Thornton. We just keep ours in the glove compartment and put it out. It's not as easy to see. This would be hanging up at on the mirror when people are coming in. It'll just be easier for staff to be able to see who's an authorized user. So there were a bunch of. Go ahead.
Okay, is the intent to then reissue these every year?
No, no, this would be a multi-year. This would be probably a two-year.
Put the numbers on the corner.
This, I made this in twenty twenty four, and they only had the option of twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, the intent would be to move to twenty-six and twenty-seven, so it would be a two.
A two-year.
A two-year placard. So we're gonna replace them every two years?
Yeah.
Well, we have a lot of changeover.
Which we do with the stickers. We're not changing our processes or procedures.
Right.
The only change we're making that the board agreed to, unless we want to reopen it, is to shift from the decals or stickers on the windshield to a placard. Everything else would remain the same.
Was the same.
Yeah, and so obviously we have the residents, so obviously, you know, taxpayers who are residents who get them would have their resident one. My intent would be the contractor one would be like the cleaning services that come here and service properties throughout town, and then actual contractors who have a location here in town like Wright Angle and Valley Run. Who would have the contractor placards, and then the contractors who come here, you know, for, you know, whether it be for the year or for a month at a time or something like that, would be the yellow one, which we have on there, years to twenty-eight, just so we don't have to print these multiple, you know, times a year. Get a large amount of those where we would be able to circle, you know, they, it expires this month, this year, this day. And so it's easier to see for us which contractors, once they show us a building permit based on how long, you know, estimated their project will be, will have that placard that is essentially just a temporary paper one that they throw away at the end of it.
So the intent was that the little stickers were only every two years?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, great. I think it's fine.
And we'll start, we'll bring it back to you back middle, towards the middle of the year when we're getting ready to do the Q two water sewer builds and make sure that we're.
Good to go for the for the transfer. Very good. All right, and I noticed as well you had some comments about mattress fees going up by Casella.
Yes.
You have?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we had talked about it in the municipal solid waste working group. And yeah, we had been able to be part of a pilot program last year through Casella, where if we provided a dry place to keep the mattresses, they would come in and pick them up for free. Yay. Well, there's a new manager for the Bethlehem Station, and they've stopped that program. So now the um the options are that we can either bring them up to Bethlehem and be charged about twenty dollars per piece, so like mattress and box spring would each at forty. They could come here and pick them up for about forty-five to fifty apiece, as long as we're able to store them in a dry place. Or they can get mixed in with their trash, and when they see them on the heap, be charged seventy-five dollars per piece. So bottom line is, Megan was going to run through and do a little bit of math just to make sure. Um, but there's there's a change on the horizon, and bottom line is the, I think it's in the packet, the the pricing that we have, charging ten dollars per definitely does not work. So um the municipal, the working group.
In your packet, in the PDF that I sent you.
Yeah, no, I saw that. I was looking for the list of the other fees we have.
Yep, that was.
Yeah, that's in the packet.
I think it was at towards the bottom.
Yeah. So for our discussion in the MSW group, I want to wait so you have everything.
It's page eleven of forty. At least in my.
Oh, yep, there it is. Okay. So we're talking about mattresses, mattress covers if they're four inches or more, and box springs. Those are all individual quote-unquote mattresses.
Yes.
So if somebody brings in a full set with the mattress cover, then that would be sixty dollars if we took it to Bethlehem.
Right.
To dispose of it.
Um, yes.
So we're, we need to adjust, obviously, well, the the option is leave the fee at the current ten dollars per and eat the other uh ten or up our, adjust the pricing.
And the MSW Working Group wanted to put forward a suggestion of forty-five dollars per item with the thought that, you know, if you're using it, you should pay for it, and hopefully to encourage people. Frequently, when you get a delivery for a mattress, the deliverer, delivering company will offer to take your old one away and to kind of hopefully encourage people to use that route. I know there are some mattresses that get sent through delivery.
Forty-five dollars per mattress?
Per mattress box spring. Yes, because that is the cost if we were to store them here and they were picked up, which
By Casella.
Because in in discussing a bit further, I know Megan needs to work through the numbers still, but just looking at it off the cuff, right now are the truck, it can't go in the trash truck. They can't go in the trash truck, so it needs to be in a separate truck. And the the thought is that it's ten pieces max can go up at a time, which, when you add in the cost for gas, wear and tear on the vehicle, the personnel, et cetera, it doesn't seem like ten saving that, you know.
The concern I have with this is that not that we're increasing the amount, it's that we're increasing the amount to such an extent that I think we're gonna start finding mattresses and ditches and places like that around town or, you know, down the road and so forth. Because
It's possible.
You're talking ninety dollars or a set.
Well, I think.
I can, I can hear people screaming already at that price, because you're going from ten or twenty, if you will, it would be to ninety, which is.
But if you have it delivered, if you have a new box spring and mattress delivered, the last time Nancy and I did it, they said, we'll take it for ten bucks or twenty bucks, added onto your price.
Yeah.
I'll just have them take.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying what I think people's behavior would be.
And frequently, box springs aren't replaced as frequently as mattresses, so the group's thought was that it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, a ninefold increase. It would be, you know, the fourfold.
I see this as a user fee.
Yes.
And I see it as a way to keep the cost to the town, overall, cost to the town down. I see this as a way to, as the MSW community does, to encourage people to use an alternate means, which would be have the have the company delivering the mattress. I think they all do it. I mean, just some do it free, some.
The issue that you're gonna have is somebody, somebody who gets the mail order.
Yep.
Uh, mattress, the rolled up one that you can get
Yeah.
from several different companies. They're gonna be the people who, but that's their decision to do that.
That's right.
Yep.
So I would, I would support it. I would support the MSW Working Group's recommendation, and we can just, we can monitor.
Yeah, the other suggestion.
If there's illegal disposal around town.
Yeah, and the other suggestion was if, like, say, one of the lodges was doing a large scale thing, I mean, the last, or or perhaps a better way to put it is if a a large condominium was being switched over by new owners, we could have a sliding scale, you know, if there's gonna be a bulk the a bulk disposal that we know of in advance, you know, perhaps we could accommodate that with, you know, if we're gonna have ten pieces, then it does seem exorbitant, you know, maybe.
Or there's make them, make them do it through their whoever's buying the, all those mattresses.
Well, yes, exactly.
As part of the contract to deliver and take away mattresses.
I I think as we advertise it, how many, Megan, did we say, maybe a couple hundred a year total?
So when the program stopped, um, at the beginning of the year, well, depending.
January first.
Yeah, um, we have stored since then twenty-four mattresses. So that's because I was told, you know, they're putting the program back out to their budget committee to see if it would get approved to stay free. Obviously, it did not. Um, and so the fees had started.
So that's about five hundred dollars and getting them there.
Yes. Um, I also want to point out, we also had a little bit similar conversation when we closed the transfer station
Right.
from twenty, twenty-four seven to three days a week.
Yes.
And, you know, we had the thoughts of, well, people are gonna leave trash everywhere, you know, they're just gonna drop it off, and we haven't seen that.
Right.
So I just wanted to have that out there as well.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you know, it is such a large cost for Casella. But either, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pay it regardless, unfortunately.
Right.
Do we have a litter ordinance that would allow us to enforce this?
Yep.
Yeah.
If people can, that behavior, if you will.
Yep.
So I have one more question, and that is since we're going to be, if you will, changing the amount on our list, um, are there any items within the list that we need to reconsider as well at the same time?
And then we did it recently.
We did it last year.
When, when did we do it?
Last year.
We did it last year.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean we can't look at it again, but.
No, I'm just asking if there was anything off the top of your head that said, eh, this is probably too low. We probably need to adjust it.
No, we did a ma- big readjustment a year ago, and the idea was to keep up.
And you know what? We we wouldn't even be doing this had it not been for the one January uh issue with Casella changing their whole program. I mean, it, I really, I'd like to go a couple of years between the fee.
Sure. Well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Between the fees, but there's nothing else on the list right now that we think needs to be adjusted.
Okay, so then the next question I have would be, how will we socialize this to the town? And I believe we need to socialize this with the town and say something so that people know, and they know that, if you will, when you're buying a new mattress, you need to.
There are a couple ways, you can insert in the next trash.
Yeah, we can do it in the next water sewer.
As an insert.
As an.
As an insert. We put something together.
Facebook on and on the website as an outfit with the start date.
I'll be on the community meeting next Tuesday, and I can mention it there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned a little bit about the, if you will, severity of the jump.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
That, because it is quite a bit of difference.
Yep.
Where historically, it's been something that's a very, you know, it's low value.
No, you're absolutely correct. When we did the, when we did the oval, we looked at the whole list last year, um, there was some significant increase, because we hadn't updated that list for ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years? And at the time, we said we need to probably every couple of years, uh, monitor this more more closely. So I think, I think we can get it around. It is a, it is a big jump. Um, but it is a way to, it is a usu fee in a sense, and keeps the cost off the town shoulders, which I think is important. And it does it does uh perhaps push people to find an alternative means
Right.
to to uh dispose of their their mattress, so.
May I ask one more suggestion just real quick? As you're putting out a notice on this, remind people that you know, there's a litter ordinance and
Oh, yeah.
it will bust them if they're caught littering mattresses.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Significantly. I just.
When, well, um, let me just ask, when do you think, when were you thinking of starting? What was the municipal solid waste?
We were thinking ASAP, just because we have, you know, a dry place to keep them, and and what, you could hold forty-five or so in there right now?
About forty-five.
So we're about halfway, halfway full, and would would those trash sewer water bills are going out?
April.
Soon.
We can, we could implement it for one May.
Yeah.
And that will give us time to advertise it.
Right. People are not gonna be happy to open that that
No.
water, and not just for the mattress.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah.
There may be.
A bunch of others.
There are a bunch of other things that they're gonna look at, so, yeah, I mean, if we can continue to, I mean, it'll cost the town money, because we're gonna have to dispose of what we get between now and then, and if people could decide to get rid of the mattress between now and then to avoid having to pay anything, but um, if you think one May is.
I think that's.
Yeah.
I would agree to that.
All right. So what do you need from us? Just a general agreement to change the fee?
Uh, no, please, yeah.
All right. Wendy, would you like to make the motions from them, since it's the recommendation from the municipal solid waste committee?
Sure. So I'll move that we increase the fee for mattress and box spring disposals to forty-five dollars, starting May first, twenty twenty-five.
I will second that motion and 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 note that we, that's forty-five dollars each
Each.
for a mattress box spring and the top or or cover, if it's greater than four.
Inches.
Four inches or greater.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, let's return to something that came up at the town meeting, ordinance twenty-one, where we had hoped to make some changes. Uh, as as a result of the vote, those changes were voted down, so the ordinance stands as it was, or is, I should say. And that is one point to make. The second point to make is that in the ordinance, it's clear that you do not need to screen the dumpster if it cannot be seen from a public way. Uh, that has not changed, so those who want to see uh doors on all dumpsters or screening on all dumpsters, no matter where they're located, uh, will have to uh discuss this with the board, or perhaps petition it for the next town meeting, because you change selectmen, select board ordinances at town meeting, and that's what it would take to change that provision in ordinance twenty-one. And the third thing is, yes, like I said, the third thing is, um, what was I gonna say? See, no, that's okay. Is that it was clear from the discussion and the vote at the town meeting that um the majority of people by far uh would like to see enclosures with four sides or at least uh screen a dumpster uh in in every respect. So um, I think you guys also discussed this at, so I'll turn it over to you. Did I describe kind of where we are correctly? You seem to.
Yes, I mean, you described where we are absolutely correctly. The sense of the working group, though, was that there was such a strong sentiment that dumpsters don't want to be seen. And would it make it easier if there was just the same um regulations for everyone's dumpsters?
In other words, if it could be seen or not from a
Right.
public way.
Yes, because the difficulty is there's a lot of talk about walking on the trails and, you know, people cutting through and across properties at different angles and.
This is deja vu all over again, because I think we've had this discussion in the past.
We have.
But the trail is, a trail is our public way.
Yes.
So.
It's not a town-maintained public way, though, as is stated in here.
Some, wouldn't like Village Trail be a town-maintained public?
Village Trail.
Village Trail is the only exception.
What about, but that one goes by some condominium as you head out towards the campground, right?
I don't think we see anyone's dumpsters.
You don't see any dumpsters.
Oh, yes, you do.
Oh, you do?
Okay, if you see them, then they would have to be screened.
And it's, it's the, and it's, the dumpster is not screened, even though, because the, because the the enclosure is, the height of the enclosure is lower than the height of the dumpster.
If it's from a town main.
And it didn't have doors, but they put doors on it. But you're right, there may be some trails. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that was just sort of the sense of the working group, but you know, was the intent of town meeting more that people just want to see all dumpsters fully enclosed? And would it incur a hardship on DPW to say, well, so-and-so doesn't have to do it, because you can't really see it from a sidewalk or any other town maintained, but you have to do it because the sidewalk, you know, does it pit?
That's gonna pit people against people, if you will.
Yeah, so is it just easier and more fair to say that all dumpsters need to be fully enclosed?
So I have a couple of questions. One, do we have any, if you will, specifications with respect to enclosures in the sense of
The regulations.
Need to be.
The regulations. The material.
Because I've seen enclosures where I, there's one I recall passing today where there was three walls, except the height of the dumpster was above it.
Right, the specification.
The regu- the regulations are in your packet that specify the height and the size.
The base, the construct, the material use, all of that.
All of that is laid out in the regulation.
This is a problem we've been struggling with for a while, and.
That regulation was updated as well, so that the height, the size of the enclosure.
That's right.
So as a first step in this process, I would recommend that we do an assessment of all of the dumpsters in town that show, so how many do we have?
I don't.
Where this is a problem.
Top of my head, but you guys, do you remember what it is?
I don't know.
It's a, it's a significant percentage, though.
Yes, we have a by dumpster enclosure. We have gone out, we have surveyed every one of them, we have taken pictures, we have assessed them, we have identified those that need to be updated.
Remediated.
Remediated.
Fixed.
Fixed. Uh, so the, we have all of that information, and I can give that to you separately.
Okay, so I'm trying to get a sense of what number are we looking at? Is it forty of sixty or?
Both myself and our supervisor for solid waste will be going out um and doing an inspection of everything, especially from town meeting, all the, you know, comments and everything that were made and the solid waste working group. All the comments that were made, making sure not only are they within the regulations, but the possibility um of what they will be. So we still have that on our docket to go out and do inspect every single dumpster enclosure.
Again.
Again, um, to make sure that they follow what the town's wishes are.
Because you had.
Well, they follow the ordinance.
Yeah, you had initiated that, and you initiated those conversations last year, right, with, yeah, so.
And so our intent would be to send, and the solid waste working group is recommending that we do two things, that we send a letter to everybody who, every dumpster enclosure, whether it's a condo association or a business, if they do not meet the current ordinance, right, that they would get a letter. It would say, the, and the letter would come from me as town manager that says, your, your enclosure by this ordinance does, it does not meet the ordinance in our regulations, and by July first of this year, you need to provide, and this is the recommendation of the working group, you need to provide us with a written plan for repairs or improvements that you will make to your dumpster enclosure to bring them into compliance with the regulation and the ordinance. And then to give them one year, because you have the ability as the board
Paragraph seven.
to grant a waiver for a year.
Yep.
Give them a year to implement that those plans, that written plan, so that by July. Those plans, that written plan, so that by July one of twenty six. All of the, all of the dumpsters in town. And maybe before, if they do the work right away.
Yeah.
Would be in compliance with the ordinance.
Right.
Do we really think a year is necessary?
Well, we have.
With building, uh, because some need concrete pads.
Some need concrete pads, there, some of them need to be completely replaced.
Yeah.
Um, there.
Yeah, one building season may not be enough time, if, especially.
And none of them, none of them have raised any, none of them know that this is coming.
Right.
It isn't like we had a letter that went out last year. Hey, get ready for this, there are big changes coming, so.
And if, uh, we do decide to, um. Add screening or doors to dumpsters that cannot be seen from a public way. If that change is made at town meeting in twenty twenty six. That's an additional thing that these folks are gonna have to consider if they're going to, uh, comply what will then be the. The new, uh, town ordinance, so that brings it into twenty six.
Yeah, and basing on a sense of the meeting, that's what we were assuming would happen when we go to the town for clarification next town meeting, the expectation was that. The vote would be to.
And that's also the input that we've received, especially from the businesses, like.
Yeah.
This is gonna take.
Yeah.
A while for us.
I mean, we, we let's changes ordinance in, uh, in March, at March town meeting, uh, three years ago, right?
Twenty two.
Three years ago.
Twenty two.
Twenty two, and, um, I think one of the changes that we did make was to specify at the time that if you could not see it from a. Public, public way, that would be okay, now we have another town meeting where that doesn't seem to be.
Yeah.
Uh, what the town wants, so I think we're, we will have to go back to the town in twenty six. And find out exactly what they want, and so this gives. Certainly the other parts of the, of the, um, corrective actions that they need to take could be done during this building season, but that'll give them. The twenty twenty six into July twenty twenty six, if now doors become required in all dumpsters.
Right.
Or any other changes we may make to, to finish off the, the process.
Or it will also bring to light that it, this will be a discussion at the town meeting, and if you have. The ability to come and talk about it.
The advantage of creating a uniform situation is that as things change within the town. Such as trees getting cut down and line of sites obviously change.
Absolutely.
A good examples where they, you know, built some of the new houses and condos down, you know, on the other side of the golf course there.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Do we know if there are any, if you will, four sided dumpsters right now? That would fail to meet the current specification.
Yeah.
There's quite a few, um, that are four sided, I mean, the one that comes off the top of my head, uh, you're not, I don't know, it's a tri pyramid. Um, their doors are sometimes not functional in the winter, um, and then also they do not have a concrete pad. So.
Okay, so the concrete pad is critical because it, it. Helps extend the life of the dumpster, because it will deteriorate faster if it's just on the ground. And it allows the crew to, it, it makes it. The dumpster sticks freezes to the ground during the winter if it doesn't have a pad.
What if it's pavement? As opposed to concrete?
Asphalt will, yeah, it, the dumpster will.
Sink into it.
Sink into.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think, uh.
Okay.
I, I think this is a good, um, plan of action, I, I would also say, Clinton, whatever you were talking about while I was, while I was gone, um. I, I think, though, we, we can make some of the non substantive changes, where it says the border selectment, things like that, since it's not. A substantive change, I think we should just update the grammar, or there's maybe a couple of grammatical errors or whatnot. So I think we can go ahead and do that for select board, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty one.
Yes.
But this major change will have to wait until.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, and then we'll see what town meeting in twenty twenty six wants to. Wants to do.
Okay, so when will the letter go out to everyone?
Uh, we should be able to get that out within a week to ten days. Okay, so we'll identify, if, depending on Megan being able to go around and assess all of the dumpsters again.
Yeah, I think that'd be important, especially if you can, you know, snap the picture, you can put the picture with, uh, with the letter.
Yeah, going down here for two days, three days, here soon, we'll do the inspections and give it updated to not only the working group, but. Uh, town members.
Okay, and so then what are the actions if people fail?
If they fail, they'll be instructed.
There's a fine schedule.
There's a fine schedule that's part of the ordinance.
Right, but.
Believe.
It's not possible they might.
Yep.
Just pay the fine.
Paragraph six. Well, it's, uh.
Come, come June of twenty six, perhaps we can revisit that.
Well, yes, now, if we do, if we do reopen, uh, for discussion, uh, or if it's petitioned open. For discussion at town meeting, uh, ordinance twenty one, we can change the amounts. Uh, for, uh, uh, failure to, to follow, right now, it's a hundred dollars for first, two hundred for second. And, uh, five hundred for third, so. I mean, we do have, uh. And if you continue to do it, you will go to court.
I just want to put it out there, also, that in the regulations, we are not able. To, you know, if it's not safe or it is, you know, the door gets completely fallen apart, it is in the regulations, and it was in the regulations before. We made the update that we will drive away and it will not be serviced. So there is the potential where they will not have trash picked up.
Right, we, we have not run into that issue in this town. Ever before, so people, people will come in and talk to the board about special situations and. And they will make their. Opinions known to the board.
Yeah.
I've already been spoken to by people in town.
Right.
With a strong emphasis of wanting everything enclosed.
I, I think we all, I think we all, uh, get, uh, comments from folks. But, but the important thing is, is that they, I'm sorry, take this call, they have to come in front of the select board, so the select board can deal with it as a board.
Right.
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 Yeah.
Sorry again.
No, it's fine.
Would you just?
Yeah, continue on, yeah. Alrighty, so, are. Are we in agreement that that's how we want to go forward, it seems?
The letter, one July and a year.
And then we're gonna give them a year, okay?
Alrighty.
A year from one July, correct?
Yes, so by seven.
By one July, we need to see what they're gonna do.
And then it needs to be. Yes, and implemented by seven one of twenty six.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and then.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we say we're going to need to see their plan, who are they sending their plan to?
To me.
Okay, and we need to make sure that all of that is specified and called out within the. Letter that goes out to everybody, I don't want people. Coming back and saying, well, I made a plan.
Yeah.
And that's not.
No, they'll submit a written plan to us.
Muddied waters there.
Yeah, we can do that.
I, I think the, the board's intent is plain to town staff.
Yes.
As to, as to what, uh, we expect them.
Yeah, I, I'm not concerned with town staff and the board, I'm worried about the. People who will try and, you know, weasel word their way out of things, if you will.
Yeah.
In this town?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
Are we done with the? MSF you?
Yes, I'm five C one.
Okay, so let us move to highway discussions. So we've got road postings and new roadside, I see a lot of towns have already put up their.
Yes.
Their posts, postings.
We have, uh, older signs, essentially, basically. Yeah, um, we did get these newer signs last year as part of the sign package, and, and it is per the order of the select board. To agree with the road postings that, uh, we are looking to post, the ones we're looking to post are Tecumseh. Packards, um. Noon Peak, since it's kind of rough right now, um, and then. Boulder Path at the intersection of the library, um. To encompass all, you know, Cascades going up the rest of Boulder Path, uh, and West Branch.
So Cascade Ridge is in there as well.
It is, yes.
Did you say Noon Peak?
I did, yes.
I, I mean, sorry, Jennings Peak.
No, I did not say Jennings Peak.
Okay.
Um, due to. Possibilities this year of being rebuilt.
Oh, I see, so it's, yeah, I got you, yeah.
And Snow's Mountain has a significant amount of pavement right now, so we don't foresee any issues on Snow's Mountain, so.
Cool.
Yeah, we do it every year, so we need a vote from the board to. To, to go ahead, you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay, so I, I move, we, uh, we go ahead and post the, um. The road limit, uh, signs as presented to us, uh, by the public works director, at the earliest opportunity. Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Yay.
Assuming there'd be a metal rods or sticks or?
Oh, we're gonna do it temporarily, um, we're just gonna use grade stakes right now, um, as we. Get new posts for, uh, the ends of roads in the, in the ground this spring. Um, we'll, they'll then be attached to those, but right now it'll just be on temporary ones.
Okay. So, road signs.
Road signs, so I know we brought this up, I also, you have a printout in your, um. Packed it there, so, um, originally I brought this. Two years ago, they don't.
Yeah, we've, we've, uh, I think we approved the, the idea of replacing with this new material.
It's like a trucks material, it's recycled plastic. And it will be double sided, um, it obviously won't say town square and Valley Road, it'll be the same on both sides.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, if we're invaded.
Um, but it will, it would look like this, um, or the variation that you have in there with the town logo on top. And then.
Instead of the bug?
Instead of the bug.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah, that's purposeful.
Yeah. Why, why making that?
The bug is a.
It's not a private road, it's a town road.
Belongs to the resort.
It does not belong to the resort.
No, yeah, okay.
Um, and essentially, so you have the one with the emblem, and you'd have one without the emblem, unfortunately, the. You know. Temporary ones that I received, I did not receive ones without emblems, but it would sit on top, um. And then obviously a stop sign would be underneath it, so that way it would be seen from all sides for anybody traveling the road instead of. Uh, just one sided like it is right now, um, it would all be reflective as well, so that way, if, you know, Camden comes to respond to something here in town. They'd be able to.
Yeah, that was the other thing we talked about.
These signs are required by the E nine one one system.
Yeah, I'm just reading that, I have a question, though.
Yeah.
Um, in some places we have two signs that are. Perpendicular to each other, and right now we have the, you know, the narrow ones. And they sit easily, but if I were to put two of those. On the same post perpendicular, do we end up with spacing issues and such, because one would have to be. You know, there'd be a gap because one would have to be dropped lower than the other.
So there's special brackets that are made for these signs by the company who makes the signs as well, so there won't be much of a gap, if anything, it'll be like. Less than half of it.
Well, what happens, there has to be more if we have another one perpendicular to it.
So.
That's what I'm saying.
So there would be a valley, what he's saying is the Valley Road to Tecumseh Road intersection, it has two signs, right?
Yeah, there's several with two, I've seen. And so then, do we end up with, if you will, height issues? Because we have to. Have the second sign, if you will, lower than the top one, obviously, which makes sense, um. Doesn't end up being too low, or do we end up raising the whole things higher, or what, what, what's? The approach there, because I, I wish you had two of these, because then I could show you.
Yeah.
Because the second sign will stand on top of the logo, if you will.
Right, so is your concern that the lower sign shouldn't have the logo?
The lower sign would have the logo.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I think that clarified.
That was right.
Be chopped off, it would, it would just be the road.
Okay, and the question? That's fine.
If you.
That's fine.
Pictures are in there.
Yeah, yeah, so that's fine, it's just if you keep that logo on there, you end up with.
So the, the lower, the lower sign will look like this. Look like this. The lower sign.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, the, the emblem is the upper sign, and then the lower sign underneath it does not have.
Yeah, right, yes, okay. And these are the signs packages that we're going to have up. By July fourth is our goal, alright, so these are the major intersections coming into Valley Road. So as you, from Triple I intersection out here up to Village. Those will all, our goal is to get all of those done prior to July fourth. And produced and installed, and then the remainder of. We have a whole list of all of the side streets, if you will, that will do. The rest of the summer, our goal is to have everything in place by next fall.
What's the total number of signs we have?
Uh, what's on that? List?
Towns or?
That we're gonna need to purchase.
Uh, one hundred and seventy one, total.
Thank you. So a hundred and seventy one, and what's the estimated cost for the total of everything?
The total of everything, we had two different line items, we had the separate warrant article.
Mm-hmm.
And then we had, uh, monies within the operating budget that totaled thirty thousand, I think. For all one hundred and twenty five thousand, for all one hundred and seventy one signs. And all the mounting brackets, everything.
And posts.
And posts, yeah.
So we're, we will have enough money to complete this project on budget and schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right? Anything else? Alright, let's move on to, thank you, Megan, old business, and, uh, Dylan, I think you're here to give us a. Update of the wastewater treatment plant project.
Yeah, so, uh, we're in receiving, uh, technical memo regarding the sewer line versus septic system, our onsite system. Uh, later this week, um, hopefully Thursday or tomorrow, um, but the latest we're supposed to receive by Friday. Um, and we'll share that with, with the board, uh, when we receive it, um. The actual facility side of it, we're, we're still working on that, um, progress has been. Good, uh, there. Couple things that they've been, they've been looking at, um, that are a little bit, a little bit innovative, that, um. You know, kind of took me by surprise, but nothing major or anything like that, just things that they do in Europe, um. That United States hasn't really come around on yet, uh, again, it's all about longevity of the facility. And making sure the facility is going to last, uh, we don't wanna, you know, have a instance like Epping. Uh, and Dan, it says an example, Epping was the first MDR facility in New Hampshire, um, and it was. And the infancy of the technology, they had a multitude of issues because. It wasn't piloted anywhere, it was, it was like kind of a, we liked the idea of it, let's just install it, there wasn't enough engineering work surrounding it. Uh, but again, they're, they're working through it, through it, uh, very well and. Um, hope to be able to give you a more, uh, a bit, an update with more substance. In the near future.
Okay. With regards to the, um, the technical memo, we'll get that to you, um, by email. Friday, we have asked Mario to set aside time and we can talk about it when we talk about meeting schedule. But I would like a special meeting next week, I want Mario to come here personally and talk to the board.
Okay.
Um, about.
Just on the septic versus the sewer line.
Versus the sewer line to the ski area.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
So if, uh, we can talk.
They'll get that in the calendar.
Now, the, the final thing is we have bids. Uh, from a contractor for the clearing of the, um. The boring sites, uh, you wanna talk to him about the process?
Just to. Be clear on this again, what we did was, um, we're just having the access to the boring sites cleared, we're not having the entire site cleared, um, it's literally just.
Right, we talked about that last time, you're just gonna go in and cut we. Right, we talked about that last time, you're just gonna go in and cut we. Sure.
Eliminate any confusion, um, we're not, you know, putting anything in excess, we're just putting what is the, the, really the bare minimum. Uh, the only thing that could come up is say there's a big boulder or something like that, we're not gonna pay to remove the boulder. Just now, and you know, we're gonna do some test works for us to verify that this is the site that's what, you know, was anticipating, yeah, um, so it's we, we actually at Black and Beach put together the RFP, our request proposal, and that's what I sent out to three contractors. Uh, this is the only proposal that we got back, I, I did reach out to the other contractors, they did have interest in it, I don't know if it's just they had uh, conflicting scheduling with other projects and that's why they didn't bid on it, um, but all in all, um, I mean, it's.
Ellie, Ellie Johnston is a local, he's done a lot of work for the town and does uh, great work.
Yeah, I'm familiar.
Um, we, you know, we recommend that, that the board vote to accept this bid. Um, we need, we'd like to get out there, it's actually getting to be a little late in the season cause it's so muddy, but this work has to be done because we can't get any meaningful site design work verified by Black and Beach until we get these test borings. So we, we need to get the boring company out there.
There's the ad that, uh, that the boring company did a sub for Black, so that's the only really, they're, they're only sub that they have besides survey, uh, and they even have a surveying uh, section of the engineering firm, but they.
They're using an outside surveyor who works around here, so.
Do we have any concern about the stumps as interfering with the borings?
No, this, the, the RFP was put together so that Ellie Johnston will cut the path and clear the spot where the boring company has to go.
And the only stumps that would remain are stumps that are, are not necessarily in the actual boring site per se, but on the pathway to it. And what, what they're anticipating doing uh, for any of the softwood. Instead of bringing, you know, they kept this bid relatively low uh, in the material side, because what they're gonna do is use, utilize the softwood instead of just hauling it up. They're gonna chip it up.
And they'll use that as.
But I thought that was a good idea as well.
Was there a timeframe that they'll, that they've committed to be able to do this with them?
So what, what I made clear when I sent out the work proposals was, uh, the work had to be completed in April. Uh, because what we had slated with the test boring, while Black and Beach had slated with their sub, wasn't made timeframe to have the subsurface investigation uh, done. So that way, you know, whether, whether or not uh, it takes them two weeks, whether or not, you know, whether it takes them a week, that's to be seen, uh, but at least it gives the test boring company, they're in Connecticut, so I mean, they're, and they're pretty popular, um, so they're gonna have as, you know, scheduling, it just gives them more flexibility on our behalf. Uh, so that way they have the whole month in May to get this done, um, and.
But if they can get it done in a week, they will.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Yeah, I think it's important that in all of our RFPs, we're specifying.
We do.
Start and stop to make sure.
I, I was sure that he did, I just didn't know.
Need dates, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's really critical, we can't let the vendors run the show on us.
No, I wasn't implying that they were, I just wasn't aware of what the day was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, so you wanna vote, so uh, the vote would be to accept the bid from Ellie Johnston Construction for their tree clearing plan as outlined in their, their response to our bid and on the dates that uh, they agreed to. Uh, for a price of twenty five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, I, can you add that, that this will be performed in April to that statement?
Well, we could.
It's in, well, what, what the motion usually is that the town manager will have a contract with the contractor that meets, the RFP said that they will do it in, so his bid is that they will do it in April.
It doesn't say that in.
No, the contract will say.
Okay, we need to make sure that that's captured though.
Yep.
Okay, anything else uh, on the new plant, Dylan, you wanna say at this point?
At this time, unless you guys have any questions.
No, it's just, it's ongoing and we need a special meeting with Mario to talk about this one. Very important aspect to it, okay, got it, we're good?
Yep.
Update on special event application.
Yeah, you, we mentioned that, well, no, we had mentioned at I believe the last meeting or maybe the meeting before going into town meeting, that it was a question about special events. And what constituted a special event? I checked with Dave and we did in fact start a process.
Right.
To define special events, but you never voted
Oh.
to do the special event permit application that I included in.
Right, cause I know Dave.
Because there were questions about what, what would, what was, would it be the size of the event? Would it be the type of event? How many times would it have to re-occur to not be a special? There were some questions at the very end of the process, and you never voted.
Okay, so we need to revisit it.
Yeah, and so all I, again, this was not to decide today.
Right, I understand.
This was just to bring it back up to you because Dave is like, where are we?
Right, and we're asking Dave, where are we with it? So, as I recall, we changed our site plan review regulations on the planning board that answered the last point. About, about what, what is a special event with regard to frequency?
Yes.
Right.
I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was like twelve times a year, or more than two mu- two in a month or something like that.
Yeah.
And I believe we changed the language uh, in the zoning ordinance on the um, on the use table to specify what some, what special recreational and entertainment events like, I think we made some changes there.
Right.
As I recall, cause I remember I was on the subcommittee for this on the planning board, we were looking at, this is going back what, well over a year. Um, we were looking at uh, size, cause I remember we looked at various towns uh, how they handle special events, and uh, they all seem to be keyed on the number of the number of people that were anticipated to attend the special event.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, maybe that's where we left it, where we were trying to determine if it's gonna be size, what that number ought to be, and what does DPS think in terms of what that number should be with regard to parking, safety, um, um, facilities, restroom facilities. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, so we were trying to, I think we were trying to find that
Yeah.
Number that DPS was comfortable with.
Okay. So what I can do then, and this kind of gives Dan some background also, but for the next meeting we would do an agenda item that would be in, under Old Business to have Dave come in with some input in, on those things.
Right.
That you just illustrated, and a recommendation for implementing this. And we'll, we'll check the site plan review reg and the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And make sure that we are not.
The regulation and the permitting, cause he has to, we need to create the regulation too for the
Yes.
Or at least the instructions for the, for the permitting.
Right.
I just hope I'm remembering correctly.
I mean, a wedding could be considered especially.
Well, well, that was one of the things, one of the things we were talking about.
Small wedding.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I think we changed the uh, the language in the site plan uh, review process uh, to uh, events which occur only once, uh, twelve times a year or twice in a month. So a wedding business here, that's their business, it's not a special, it's not a special event, we were trying to capture what you, what you were saying.
So last week, we had a special event, and that was the Play Soper Memorial Dinner and Rites and so forth. Um, that went off very well, by the way.
Great.
Um, and I appreciate the town working with Craig and working with the sopers to help with all the parking issues and such with that. I think they had over a hundred people, they raised a lot of money, it's a good cost.
And that's, that's exactly the type of thing we're trying to capture, like, I think a lot of special events we do have tend to be fundraisers of some sort, not all of them, but you know, fundraisers or charities. Uh, charity support of one form or another, and our recreational oriented more than anything else.
I, I noticed that there was a, I think three hundred dollar fee associated with the application. And I would recommend that we modify the wording to allow the board to waive that fee for charitable organizations.
I think we already have.
Didn't say that in the.
And, and for the special permit.
Doesn't say it on the application, but we need implementing regulations for that, and we can put that in that way.
Because those things usually come to the board and that we will waive the fundraiser, so, yeah, we will need to, we need to make sure that we follow.
So you need to see a set of regulations to implement the application form that I included in the pack.
Right.
Yes.
So why don't we give him a month and we'll do the first meeting in May?
Yeah, that makes, that makes more sense, and, and um, yeah, and I think we just wanted to follow what we have for our other permitting in terms of, you know.
Yep.
The, the language and the regulation, general, general terms, like the select board having the ability to waive the fee, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Alrighty, anything else on, on that update?
Not on that.
Okay, alright, let's move on to the water sewer fee structure changes, uh, highlighting it. Okay, as I already mentioned, I think it's going out in the next, the next mailing for the water sewer trash trash bill, I think you guys read.
I'd like to send it for that.
We're sending.
Oh, okay, fine, yeah, no, no.
Do a separate mailer, I was thinking to get it out on Friday or early next week.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, it's a big change in how we do it, I, that's, I see, so that's why you reissued, so to speak, the notice on the website.
Yes.
You put it back up to remind people, which basically was what you had written, so now we're gonna mail that out to everybody.
On letterhead.
On, okay.
Yeah, and um.
Slap a copy in the post office, the usual thing.
Communicating this, but I, I think it's working, we are getting calls into Town Hall from residents asking more detailed questions about what's happening, so I think it's effective.
Alright. Any, any uh, questions on, on this? I think we'll just continue to move forward as, as planned.
Yeah.
We're good?
Hmm.
Pretty good, okay. Let's move on to financial review, and so now we finished town meeting, so we have some numbers we gotta send off to the state. And then the MS.
MS two thirty two.
Two thirty two.
Uh, it's a report of the appropriations as voted at town meeting.
Right.
You notice there's no revenue numbers on here, that's, this is just the appropriation side of the budget.
Right.
Uh, our, our requests, uh, you know, this summarizes our entire budget document into the state form.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you just, you um, fill out name, position, or you can just sign it and we'll put the name and position in, but uh, you, we're asking you to approve it and sign it.
Okay. So we should take a vote to approve uh, the uh, MS two three two for twenty twenty five. Uh, app, as presented, uh, and this is the form that goes to the DRA concerning uh, what was approved in terms of appropriations at town meeting in twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna sign it to move things along, you guys get a chance, you could become filling who we are, right?
I'll second that.
Oh yeah, the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Good, thank you.
Yes, we do wanna keep the state happy, because I'm sure there are things where we're gonna have arguments with the state.
Yes, there are.
Yeah.
So you, uh, just bear with us, a couple more meetings, we're getting the information into BSNA and uh, we'll get back to the regular uh,
Financial report.
Financial reporting, but Steve, do you have anything to highlight uh, off?
Yes, nothing in particular relative to the financial statements that you have in front of you, everything uh, from an expense side seems to be tracking as planned, but uh, the revenue side I would say that the rec revenue in particular is, is a lot higher for this time of year than it has been in prior years, so working her team, we're doing a great job in their efforts of collecting camp fees and guidebook fees and uh, special event um, fees, so they're chugging, chugging along at a good speed. Um, as Mark just said, it's my plan to have the um, the twenty twenty five budgets and actuals in that financial report within the next month, I have a meeting scheduled with Bashon Clouquet, our account auditing firm, on the fourth, he's gonna come up and talk to our new finance administrator. Um, outline some expectations that he has coming up for the, the planned financial audit, and kind of just talk through the DRA portal with her and I, and just do a little added training, um, with the, with the presence of Katie now, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just barely noticed this, but there's a lot of front freedom pass income in here that I'm assuming is a mistake.
In the financial report?
Or was that from the true up?
It's, it's in the uh, revenue report that you, it was in our package.
Six thousand six hundred twenty five.
See, I, I believe that.
That must have been the true up then, okay, that was a true.
That's the January two.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, any questions on the other members of the board?
Nope.
It's time. Alright, let's move on to calendar reviews, our next uh, regular select board meeting is on two April. Here in the downstairs meeting room at, at three PM, the planning board has its next regular uh, meeting scheduled for ten April here at eight AM. Uh, at the downstairs meeting room, so now we've got, I think, it sounds like we need to lay on a two special meetings. One to go over the select plans uh, work review and the town manager's uh, work plan review. And then another one to, to talk to our town engineers, so, shall we work the calendars?
Can we not do them at the same time, or is it too much?
No, it's gonna be too much.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think even the town, I, I, it had occurred to me, and I had mentioned this to Mark, uh, when we were setting the agenda about a special meeting, I thought maybe even just the town just the town manager work plan review and the select board work plan review might take more than one meeting, depending on how long we wanted to to sit here and do it, I think in, you know, a couple hours.
Okay.
Um, before we all get kinda strung out, so, um, we just need to schedule a couple meetings now, the both those meetings, I think we need to do sooner rather than later, right?
So I was, I've proposed that the twenty sixth, next Wednesday be the meeting with Mario. Uh, he's, he's available and it would give you a few days to look at the technical memo.
Yeah.
Do you have a time? Did he, did he say a time yet?
We can do our regular.
Yeah, instead of time, it typically, uh, morning meetings with him has been.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine all day on the twenty sixth.
You're okay on the twenty sixth.
Morning, morning better for you?
Yeah.
Alright, should be good on the twenty sixth.
Uh, how long you anticipate?
He drives up from Mass, so ten o'clock.
Yeah, no, give him, give him a little time to drive up and get a cup of coffee or something.
Ten to twelve. Yeah.
So.
Ten to twelve on the twenty sixth.
Three twenty six, ten to twelve. Okay, that good, Dan?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, it works good.
And so now we need to have, uh, we also need to schedule the work plan meeting.
So I'm good for that anytime.
So.
Not tomorrow.
Um. Yeah, tomorrow won't be good for me, for me either, um, I was gonna say, do we wanna try to get this in, because if we don't finish up, we maybe can come earlier.
Right.
Uh, like at nine o'clock to finish up what we need to finish up on that, and then roll into the meeting with Mario on the twenty sixth at ten o'clock.
I'm on, I'm on for that.
Is that? So that means we'd have to have the meeting either next Monday or Tuesday.
Next Tuesday works for me.
Either day works for me.
I sense a hesitation from the town manager.
Can we do the morning on Tuesday?
Yeah.
I, that's.
See, the afternoon I'm in Concord and I really need to go, cause it's education funding stuff.
Yeah.
On Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah.
And, or I could do Monday. I can do basically anytime on Monday.
I would have to be Monday before ten o'clock, I'd have to leave at ten.
Well, what, what time are we looking at uh, Tuesday, like nine o'clock or the usual?
Yeah, nine o'clock was good for me.
I can do anytime on Tuesday.
Tuesday morning.
Would that work for you?
Hmm, I'll have to move something around, but I'll, I'll move it around, yeah.
Tuesday morning, Dan?
Yeah, that's fine.
And let's, you know.
Nine.
Let's do nine, because if we have to go a little extra to get through it, are you good until?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Noon, it should, the absolute positive latest, that I'm not. Noon is at the absolute positive latest, that I'm not saying we want to do, but we may have to do.
Well, and at that point, we could always, like you said, do the nine o'clock.
Decide to come back early the next nine, alright, and, and do that. So that was, uh, what was that dated?
That was three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
And ninety.
Uh, nine A M to.
Midnight.
Whenever, right. Now, um, it's in that meeting too, Dan. I think I, I talked to Dan about he had some.
Yeah.
Uh, questions about some procedures, uh, that he'd like to go over with the, with the town manager and the rest of the board. So I think, uh, we can incorporate the, those, the discussion or the questions you raised at that, at that meeting along with the.
Yep.
Along with the work plans.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, we have enough meetings?
We have enough meetings.
Right, now you're gonna be gone, right?
For, for the record, for just in case, I will be out of town from April sixth through fourteenth.
Six to fourteen.
And. I'll get you guys care. Or need to care.
Of course we care.
April twenty-first through May second is my.
Taking some time off.
Yeah.
Very good. Things just roll.
Right now, I've talked to Dave and probably Dave will be acting manager during that.
Okay.
Okay.
For a signature.
Great. I don't see anything on our, on our schedule.
No, right now, our, our regular meetings in April are the second.
The second and the sixteenth, so, right.
We should be okay. And then the next meeting after that will be May, will be May eighth or May seventh.
Okay.
So.
Are there any critical schedule items that need to be dealt with?
This is what we're doing here. There's nothing, nothing right now other.
Terms of getting things like R F Ps out and things like.
Um, enough will, yeah, no, nothing would be interfering with that. We'll be doing it as regular course of business. Yep, okay.
Alright. So let's go ahead and move on if we're done with calendar review, everybody. Let's go ahead and move on to board concerns and directives. I wanna get to the ex officio updates, but before I forget, um, let me just start this off. This, Dan, is where each select board member, if there's something you wanna raise, uh, to discuss that's not on the agenda. So, the one thing I had a question about, uh, is the, uh, the dam boards or the boards for the dam?
Yeah.
When do you think you'd be able to put them in? We have them, right?
Yeah.
Is it safe yet? Maybe, let me, let me preface.
Thing is on.
You mean boards, boards. Yeah.
Board.
Yeah, yeah, the wooden boards.
We are not.
Flat, the, the wooden flashboards that, uh, activated and were washed away or. But that includes some pipe work that needs to be, we need to.
May sixth.
Oh.
That's not good.
But it'll be that long?
No, hopefully it will not be that long.
Okay.
We just need to let all the material that's sitting there melt.
Right, okay, you're gonna wait for that, right?
While we.
Oh, you're talking about in terms of safety, the ice that's down in the, down at the, okay, sorry, alright.
As soon as the weather allows us to safely access the concrete portion of the dam. They will get out there. We have a, we have a deadline of May sixth because.
Hopefully I should be gone by then, right?
Yeah, well, it better be. Um, but we need to get the flashboards back up because we need to pawn to start filling back in. Because we have a, we have a boat special rental in early May.
Yeah.
And we have the fishing derby, uh, at the end of May, so where the goal is to do it sometime in April.
Great.
Just.
As soon as weather allows.
Going off from that, no, I know Megan, you said you were doing some research on, on that style of dam and if. Uh, did you find any other ways to approach regulating? It just seems so.
Well, we can't, we can't change, we can't change.
No, not, not change the dam itself, but I mean, any different boards, any different.
No, we can't.
Ways to like lift them sooner or.
Kind of procedure.
Fine. Yeah.
Was just over the years after the initial when we built it, the gauge of steel, the thickness of the steel holes that we use. That has actually gone down, uh, so we will be bringing it back up to what it is supposed to be at.
Okay, okay.
It was brought down not because we wanted it down, but because of the state. And so if the state says that the gauge can go back up. Then we'll put.
Right.
Stronger gauge steel in the thickness of the pipe.
But we can decide to do that without.
No, we cannot just do that without the state saying that we can.
So are we waiting for a decision from the state?
I've been in discussion.
None of them.
She's, she's already talked to the dam bureau and if they say that we can put the heavier gauge pipe in, we will.
Right.
But we're ma- we're waiting for a decision from them, correct?
You have one already?
Yeah, we already have.
Okay, she already has the decision.
You have the decision and it was just, is that documented anywhere?
And we have the, and we have the boards, so just a matter of safety.
The new pipe, so we're ready to go as soon as it's safe.
And the reason these came down was we were just caught by surprise for this particular rain event, right? It didn't look like it was gonna be what it, what it was going to be.
Yeah.
And so they did what they were supposed to do, because I think you guys pulled the boards when we.
We did.
When we know there's gonna be a, an event that could activate the boards. This was a case of. Um.
Just didn't pull enough blocks.
Pull enough blocks, yeah, because the event turned out to be.
Well, we're also balancing because remember the mountain was using, the mountain was using the water for snowmaking.
Right.
Which were required to provide them with access to the water.
Yeah.
So, we normally during the winter try not to pull any blocks because they're using.
Of course.
Right. We're gonna have to get more aggressive about it.
We are because as it gets shallower and shallower.
Yeah.
And wetter and wetter.
And wetter and wetter. Yep.
Uh, the only other thing I had is, uh. The repair of that guardrail on valley.
Hmm.
Oh, on the walking path.
Yeah. It's on the, on the calendar. Just say yes. The correct and only answer is, yes.
It's on the calendar, but for when?
Well, do we have?
Well, I think that, I think.
I mean, do we have a plan?
I, I think we leave, I, I think we can leave that to. To our staff, too. I just wanted to make, to, to fit it into their, to fit it into their schedule. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, we, we will, we will get to it as soon as.
The, the reason I brought it up is because I want the town to realize that we are aware of it and it's on the calendar for repair. It's put into the work schedule.
That guardrail and the one that's over on West Branch that comes down, um, on the corner.
Oh yeah, that one's all, that one's in pretty bad shape.
We don't know if it was not us, oh, for fall season, um, but that is one that we are aware of that will be.
Okay.
Are you talking about on the walkway there?
Yeah.
Where it was massively damaged by somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh, I do wanna talk about the ex officio updates, but those are the only two, um. Uh, concerns I had that either of you folks, uh, have any issues you wanted to bring up?
Most I have is ex officio updates, so I'll.
Okay, wait for that. Dan?
So I found a few things just in perusing.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Obviously, the website now needs to be seriously updated since the elections and stuff. There's quite a bit of. Stuff that's, I believe, not in good shape there. I think Bob Fries is still a board member. And I don't, I resent changing my name to Bob.
I think, uh, that's a very, very, uh, uh, very well, uh, observed and taken. I think we had talked in the past, I think you guys were moving towards.
Well.
Uh, redesign and a, go ahead.
Things like what he just highlighted need to be updated now.
Anyway, right.
But we're doing a redo of the website this summer, so.
Okay.
The major content items, you know, the town history and the, you know, the, some of the descriptive. Things for each of the departments and the actual layout, all that stuff's gonna be updated this summer. So, um, but the immediate, the more immediate things are things that we can take care of now. The vote results and all of that.
That, the one other co- I had a several other comments and some of these, I think. Um. They get at something I'm trying to work with the community on and that, and that is communications. And our, you know, our website is the face of the town, if you will. And so I think it's really important. Um, one of the things I noticed is we seem to be behind on getting minutes posted. We seem to be. Um, posting agendas after the meetings instead of before the meetings. And I think that that's not a good practice. I think we need to be posting our agendas upfront before the meetings. So that people can make a decision whether to be here based on the potential content as outlined in our agendas. And I agree that most of the agendas are similar, but I think that's important. So I think there are places where we need to actually change. What we are doing and what we have been doing. And I'm trying to.
Okay.
It just helps with the town.
On the agenda, I wasn't aware, maybe I should have been.
Yeah.
That we weren't, uh, posting them time. We are required by law to post them. I, I, I believe we've been posting them.
I think they get posted after.
No.
I mean, I didn't see it posted yesterday.
It was posted this morning.
Okay, well.
Sure, I changed Bob's name to your name this morning. I didn't see your, what your comments were cuz I didn't see some of the things you have been on top of, but.
Yeah.
That you were requesting to talk about.
Yeah, that's, there's other areas.
I just wanna get back to one other thing too. So yes, I think we just, we'll make sure, I mean. Uh, yes, we gotta follow that law, but the one other comment you made, Dan, about the minutes, you've, you've hit. A neuralgic point. I think this board in the past has tried to, uh, has tried to, um. Finance, use town funds to hire a, a person who can listen to the minutes and transcribe them.
Mm-hmm.
And get him to us in time, cuz again, well, by law, we should have a draft out there within five, five days. And we just haven't been able to meet that. And, uh, in the past, the board has decided, well, we'll just continue to, to do it that way. Um, now we can't have the official minutes posted until we actually vote on them, obviously. Uh, but the draftman is supposed to be out in, in five days and we just have not had the staff for years to be able to do that. And do everything else. I think we should take money. I think we looked at a cost estimate of what was it? Ten thousand dollars or something like that?
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen and the board discussed it and voted it down last time. To do that. So if we, if we wanna look at it, that again as an agenda item and have a vote and talk about it and then, and then ask Mark. See where we can, where in the budget we can get that money, we can find someone who can take on that duty.
Well, it's a compliance issue at this point. And we're failing to comply.
Yes.
And that's unacceptable.
As I said, you hit one of my neuro, neuro.
So.
Neuralgic points.
And if it's fifteen K, you know, fifteen K is a drop in the bucket on a budget as large as ours.
So why don't we?
That's necessary. It's mandated by state law. And I think it's unacceptable if we're not meeting our obligations.
Fair enough. So why don't we have an agenda item, we'll put it on there and, uh, discuss it again and then we can vote on it as a board, whether we wanna spend the money to hire. Somebody to take care of the, the minutes, uh, and I think we'd be, we were looking at not only select board minutes, right, but we were looking at.
Planning board.
Planning board minutes as well. Um, and that will free up the staff to try to keep up with a tremendous amount of work. They have and all the other duties that they have.
Um.
Okay, so, sorry, you had more?
Yeah, no, that's, I have a couple others.
Sure.
Um. I noticed that in select, it says select minute.
Select board is.
Yeah, select board ordinance twenty-two, that we have quite a few typos and such in there. And it's, it's like forum instead of from. And, and not, and words like that. So we have quite a few mistakes in some of these. And then on. Twenty-four. We list a whole series of locations for fire lane parking zones. And. The entire. Ordinance, we need to consider how we're doing that because we have a list. And this list is, you know, it's now about this long. Some of the places don't even exist any longer in there.
Yeah.
And. And I'm not sure that's the best approach that we should be using for this. Um, it also doesn't include. Places that are, um, you know, where we have fire lanes and such, where we've had new building developments and such like that. And so trying to put a list in. And then maintain it through an ordinance where we have to get it changed through, um, town meetings. That just doesn't make sense. Uh, we should consider rewording that. Um, in such a manner that either the list is something that we can amend. And keep, if you will, separate, so that we don't have to go to town meeting to get it approved. Or we should consider rewording it such that we do not need a specific list of locations.
Right, I believe, sorry, if I can just interject, with grammatical things, we can go in and just fix.
Those are non substantive, I think, so.
But we do have on our list of things to do is to start really diving in, going through all the ordinances and clearing up stuff like that. Cuz some of them get written and I know that the typos bug me too. I was just like, you, you know that was wrong.
Yeah, no, we've just been handling them as we've reviewed the ordinances.
On, right here, you, you have the last year that those ordinances were amended.
Yeah.
So we can, part of the work plan that I proposed several weeks ago.
Go review, review all the ordinance.
Was to review all of the ordinances because some of them haven't been looked at in twenty-one years.
Right.
So.
Correct.
So we need, we need to go through every single one of them. There's gonna be issues on many of them, like what you just highlighted.
Right, so I'm a detail oriented person and I tend to catch things like that. Um, I think there's one hotel list and I'm like, I've been in town for over twenty years and I've never heard the name.
No, as, as, as Mark said, it was part of our work plan to review all the ordinances and correct what we can correct. Uh, with, without having to go to town meeting and then decide what do we wanted to do with things that we needed to go to town meeting.
And the only other one I, I mentioned in this forum here really is. Is. Where we have the videos of the, all of our meetings and such. That is the most hodgepodge mess of. Listings that I've. Can go through when you pull up YouTube on there to try and figure out. You know, where was last week's meeting, if you will, the.
Anyways, go to the search.
So, if you don't use the search function, it's nearly impossible. I saw, I think, one from twenty-four, right next to one from night, um, from two thousand twenty-one and, and so forth. So we need to see if there's a way to logically add some structure and organization to that. Um.
So it's a matter of.
Because right now, I find it to be.
Right.
Less than useful. I gave up.
Yes, a point taken.
We will, we will look at the YouTube channel and find out how to organize.
There's, there has to be a way.
I got it.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
I think some of that may be outside our control though, right?
It, it may be. Don't know yet. I, I gotta look at it.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Yeah, just let us know what you uncover.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything else?
So, I think for this meeting, I think that's all I have right now.
Alright.
Okay.
For the moment.
So, um, we wanted to talk about ex officio duties.
Updates.
Other things for us to do?
Well, no, just a couple updates from the M S W.
Oh yeah, okay.
Working group.
Alright, let's do that.
Um. Positive news from, uh, M S W first, that'll be shortest, we went through most of it already, but apparel impact gave us our results. And we kept four point two four nine tons of textile waste out of the landfills.
Point two four nine.
Yes, so that, that's very successful.
Good. Four and a quarter tons, right? Uh, four and a half ton.
Four and a quarter.
Four and a quarter tons, okay.
Of textile stuffs.
Good, that's, that's really good.
Awesome. Um, and I think that was the main good thing from there. Uh, the town core working group also met yesterday. We, um, discussed primarily. The Boulder Path Road, reviewed the plans there. Um, and I know this is probably coming up in a agenda in a future meeting, but just to put it in the back of your head, the. The working group is recommending um keeping the layout of the road similar to how it is now. So as you turn on to Boulder Path, starting with the sidewalk on the west end, west side of the road.
Okay.
And having the crosswalk to the eastern side by the tennis courts.
Right.
Um kind of as it is now.
The town core working prefers.
That was especially with the, between, between the financial savings and just the. The flow.
Okay.
And keeping things traditional for folks.
More discussion to follow, sure.
Discussion to follow, but that would just.
No, it's nice to know what the town core working group is thinking.
Yeah.
It's important.
Yeah. And um we also discussed the um, the Golden Eagle Lodge, the pathway between Golden Eagle Lodge and Town Square.
Another favorite of ours.
I know. And it was reiterated that we can do the pavement all the way to the bridge. And that will not interfere with the Nordic um easement use. Um, and our next meeting, we're gonna go over the lighting plan a bit more, but those were. The main things, unless we've forgotten anything that sticks out to you. Now, just to keep y'all on the loop on this.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, shall we move to just re, I I wanna re uh up. Our ex officio duties, so we make sure as a board that part of, part of being on the board is. We split up some of the other duties that we have. Uh there's a planning board, uh a select board, ex officio representative. On the planning board. Uh Wendy, as you might have gathered, uh Dan, is uh covering two select board positions. Uh the town core working group and the, the municipal solid waste working group. Um, so we just want to confirm, now I'm covering the planning board ex officio. Um you may want to take some time just becoming more familiar with your select board duties before you. Before you uh want to jump into any of these, any of these others. Um and that's something we can talk about. I also thought uh was going to at least raise now, uh we don't have to make a decision now, but it seems to me. It would be helpful to have a a working group on easements. I think we need to clean up our easements. I think something we're gonna discuss in a work plan, but I think we need a a group offline to actually go through, do the work. Um, and so one of us should be part of that, something, something to think about.
I can.
You'd like to.
Participate.
Okay, and uh but wait, there's one more I was thinking of. Uh that legislative bulletin that we received got me to thinking that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff coming down our way from the state capital, much of which is. Um not good for the town in the larger sense, although maybe good for other, in other ways. Um it perhaps would be good too to have somebody on the board. Uh be part of a three-person uh working group to keep track of these legislative issues. A lot of the issues deal with selectmen, a lot of them deal with planning board, there's one, there are some that deal with uh municipal solid waste. I mean, it's the whole gamut of municipal services, so I I think.
School funding.
Well, school funding, it's, that's more the the province of the school board, but we have to keep an eye on it because it's a part of our, our overall.
Right, it's.
Tax rate. So um I was thinking that a board that was comprised of a select board member, a planning board member. Conservation commission member, because that's another, that's another area where these laws, uh this, or at least this legislation. Uh in Concord is discussed, uh would also be a good one to have.
Even the solid waste working group having kind of.
Right.
Whoever we think, whoever we think could get together. Um so um. I don't know if that interests you at all, Dan. If you'd like to take that and the easement on, I'll stick with the planning board. At some point, we probably ought to discuss uh uh planning board ex officio.
Sure.
If you think you're more interested in that. And then when do you keep the, keep the two you have? So I'll do, I'll do the playing board, you do the two and. Maybe you can talk, I think you just talked to to Mark about setting up.
I think that those would be useful working groups.
Yeah, and they are what they are, if they, once they, they're, if they turn out to be not useful or.
Well, the legislative one is not a year-round one.
No, but just during a particular period.
During the, the filing of bills.
Right.
Through the end of the session in June.
Yeah.
You know, that's a timeline. Having somebody following those legislative updates every week. Because NHMA does most of the heavy lifting on tracking the bills.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh.
Yeah, that was their report.
That's um, you know, that gets updated every week, but having a group. Here in town that looks at it every couple of weeks.
Maybe recommend that we, that the board sends something for contacts or that goes out to the larger community. And alerts them to a legislative uh a proposal that we think would be damaging to the town and try to get other people to.
Yeah.
Contact their representatives. I think the easement one is, is, I think that's more of a defined time where we look at the easements.
Right. I already started reading all the easement documents that are forwarded.
Okay, great, great. All right, so if you cover those two, I think that's all I had on the ex officio updates. Did we want to talk about? Uh department head participation in.
Yeah.
Our meetings. Let's see, we have three department heads here. Um, like one, two, three, four now. Hi, I didn't see it work here. Uh we've gone back and forth in recent times about whether or not department head heads ought to be here to give their reports. We've begun to shift to, to actually, the department heads providing written reports. So I think now we're getting written reports from. From uh Public Works. I say, I think I saw the first one this time from Recreation and we've been getting them. Uh from public safety for, for some time, so. Do we want to maybe reorganize this a little bit?
Would, what I would like, if in the interest of, of their time, have department heads. If they have an agenda item, obviously they will be here. Um but for the next couple of months at least. And then we can reevaluate it, have written reports, which would be one-page bullet comments. Uh from the department heads. Um and then if you have questions, comments. Uh you can direct them to me, we can get you answers via email or answer at the next meeting.
Right.
Whatever you would like, but just try to uh limit the amount of time that they spend in our meetings. Because they are very lengthy at some point and sometimes there's just a couple of things.
Yeah, they sit here for a whole two-hour meeting or three-hour meeting and they only need to be here for ten minutes.
Right, so, so have the written reports the way that we're submitting them to you. Um, we can reevaluate in a couple of months if you want. Detail about more specific things or whatever, that's fine, but they'll highlight their regular operations. Any special projects they're working on. And then if there is an agenda item like Megan had several today.
Yeah.
Dylan's always gonna have a couple because of the treatment plant project.
They come to me.
Then they'll come to the meetings. Um, and.
Yeah, finally give it a shot.
If that's all right.
I don't have a problem with that. I would ask that in the written reports, we try to provide, you know, content that's substantive. You know, useful.
Yeah, and.
And detailed enough so that it's not just somebody's, you know. Little note on something, but it's more provides information that the board can use for. Um.
Well, the written reports are to the town manager.
Well.
The writ, well, no, no, the written reports will be.
Just again then.
Okay, so the written reports will be a bullet highlight. And then if there's a pro, a big project or something. That's going on, that's probably gonna be an agenda item anyway.
Right.
So that, the the substantial stuff, they're gonna come in and talk to you about still. All right, but the bullet comments will just let you know regular operations and. You know, uh just to give you kind of a sense of what has happened in the last couple of weeks.
Sure.
Uh within the department. If you have specific questions, you can direct them to me and I can give you more content if you want it. Or we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and give you a more detailed explanation if you, if you. Feel you need it.
That's why we can always contact you.
You can always, and you can always email me and say, hey, there was this bulleted item. What's happening with this project? You can, you guys can always call me or, or email me and ask.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, the one thing I would say, Mark, is if. Any activities are getting behind schedule. Or if there are problems, then we need to know that as soon as we can. And that needs to be reflected within the reports. Okay, and that's, that's kind of an important thing. Because there's a lot of projects going around, you know, on in this town and. And trying to keep track of everything is important. And it's very easy to let things start slipping or you get a little behind and then something gets behind and then something else comes up and. Next thing you know, things are off track.
Okay.
And I think as a board, we have a responsibility to sort of oversee everything and make sure that everything is. You know, to the best of our collective. And that's all of us ability, try and keep things on track.
Fair enough.
Right.
Okay, so let's try um, let's try this uh new method for a couple of months, see if it, see if it uh worked. It's another crack at something we've been trying to get at. The last couple of years. Um so do we want to do uh department head reports? We have department heads here.
We have our written. Very important stuff to talk about.
Okay, so I was gonna say, we have the written reports. I think unless um the department heads had anything else they wanted to add, that's not, not in a written report. Yes.
One small item, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Small. Chris, Kristen, we applied back in uh December for the paperwork with the DMV to make her our. Uh dedicated motor vehicle agent.
Yes.
We got a call this morning from the state saying that the paperwork just arrived on their desk and we have the application now filled out. It just requires signatures.
Oh, all right. Very good. We can, we can do that. I can do that. Uh Dylan, did you want to say anything about current operations? Uh anything notable? Since you're here?
Yeah. There, there is. Uh we had an issue on River Road, but the super line.
Oh, yeah.
That was. Section of the line was frozen. Uh it's, it's a dead end section of River Road. Uh, you know, it's so.
I was gonna say, I'm trying to figure out where the dead end is.
What I mean is dead end.
The, the pipe, the sewer line is stubbed off.
Um, the far end of River Road.
Right.
Not, not the closest to the West Branch.
Right.
But the further.
At the Soper's house.
But that was, that was part of it, yeah. Uh but it actually, there was multiple sections of it that, that froze. Uh. It was, you know, it's, we had a colder than normal, at least for the, the last decade or so, um winter. We hadn't had issues since I started here. Uh so I started in twenty nineteen. We haven't had one issue in that, that whole timeframe, so. Um, you know, it kind of came at a surprise that the, the line uh had the issue that that did. Uh but we, I had some uh some help from Dana White. He, he is the contractor who installed the system for the Sopers. Uh so Jeff Sober had called him, so Dana and I were on site. Uh we had Raul's come out. They used the hot water jetter uh to thaw the line, get everything back in service. Uh we have one other homeowner who's affected, who I'm working with. They're, they're going to be out of town, so they're. But more than happy to be flexible with us to try to identify, or pinpoint what the issue actually is. Um to try and minimize costs on both ends. Uh but it's just one of those things that um. We're gonna try to, try to look at it and and see what we can do for the future, so. But other than that, just. The maintenance items, we had to work on the lagoons today, um do some aeration. Uh corrective actions, the header, the way that the headers are connected, they, just a cable, cable and, and latch basically. And from the ice, what happens is the ice starts to pull on them over the winter time and they just, basically the cable slips out. It's just one of those things, just a little bit wasted, um instead of breaking the header, you know, it's uh.
Releases.
Official part, basically. Um but just, just some spring cleanup type things, so.
Was the uh contributing factor to the frozen line, a lack of flow?
Yes. Part of the issue with all of River Road and West Branch Road is that is a wad of part-time residents. Um, and if they, if they were there all the time, I can't see it freezing. And I, you know, not just because of, there's a lot of factors that I can consider, right? It's not just.
The, where it is, yeah.
A lot of contributing factors, but there did, a number of them. Uh but I would say, uh especially the Sopers, as, as you mentioned. They're at the very end of the line. And you know, the fact that they're at the very end of the line and they're part-time, I mean, again. I'm not saying they have to be full-time residents or anything like that, but just, just the way that it worked out. It's, if they were a full-time resident that lived there, that line wouldn't have issues because it's the very end of it. So there would always be flow being pushed through that line from the very end of it, the very, the other end of it. So it, it's, again, it's just, it's an unfortunate, uh it's unfortunate the way that it worked out. Um between the installation, but practice of who's living here full-time and not, it's a contributing, a huge contributing factor to it.
Well, on behalf of them, thank you for helping them and such.
You know, of course, it just.
The, the irony of the situation is they had about thirty people staying at their house that weekend.
Oh, perfect timing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Murphy strikes at the best time.
Luckily, though, we were able to get the issue resolved within a matter of a few hours and they were back with business.
Yeah.
It's not just about the number of connections to the line. It's also about the resident status of those who are.
Usage.
Yeah, the volume.
So not only, not only do we have.
Right.
Seventeen of the thirty-four possible connections out there. We also have many of those seventeen not being full-time residents, so you've got a. This is a consideration for the discussions of Snow's Mountain Road.
Absolutely.
Going forward because it's gonna be the same kind of system.
Is there a way to artificially create flow?
No.
Like, I don't know, auto toilet flush, and being facetious, but you know.
The, the alternative. How I want to phrase this. The real solutions to that is not one that we want to endeavor.
Okay.
The only real way to do that is to essentially have tap water. Be pumped right in.
That's, okay.
Hour taking treated water, just another water treatment plant.
Yeah.
Just to prevent a line freezing. I mean, in practicality, it would work, but the problem is you're just wasting one resource to protect another.
Yeah, okay.
So it's.
Yeah.
But there's some, there are a number of solutions.
I remember insulation or heated.
Yeah.
Yeah, heat.
There's a number of solutions, I.
But heat traces don't last.
That's the problem. So I mean, the, the short-term solution is, is the heat trace. It's a, it's a short term because everything has a useful life. And then you're gonna be in, you're gonna be back there fifteen years later. To replace the heat trace, so that way it doesn't freeze on you in February or March.
Um.
Put it on the schedule.
Well, we'll see. So I've been in the valley for a couple decades now and this has happened how many times?
Twice.
Oh, twice, okay. So twice. So once every ten years, you have a problem, it's going to take a couple of hours to fix.
No, the last time took, took weeks to fix.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It was much more extensive. So, so this is a bigger discussion probably for the strategic meeting.
Very good, all right.
Wanted to try to go on things.
Yeah, no, no, that was a significant event.
Yeah, thank you.
Valley, so, once in a ten-year event that occurred on, in your watch, so.
Yeah, and it's certainly nothing to do with me being here.
All right, so um unless anyone has anything else on their board concerns, or directors, or department head reports, I'd like to move. Correspondence.
Mm-hmm.
Am I good?
Yep.
So I believe we have four.
Three emails.
Three, I thought we had, I thought we had four. Or is it three? Okay, I'll go with three, three is better. So just for the record, we received an email. Uh from uh the select board received an email on the uh, on the official uh. Channel, the web, the website uh expressing, uh this is from Stan Picos, expressing his disappointment. As he expressed at town meeting at uh the increase in, in taxes and, and believes. Uh we're setting ourselves up for a tax disaster uh, uh D-Day, as he called it, uh when the new wastewater treatment facility nears. Just wanted to point out that he sent that email. We also received an email from Mike Fergal, who also. Uh made a couple of points that Stan made, but also wanted the select board to follow up on a suggestion he had about. Uh whenever there was a change, a significant change in a year-on-year budget item that we include a column in the budget. A year on year budget item that we include a column in the budget report that explains. In as few words as possible, why, what the purpose of the change was, he brought up the cemetery as the example. Uh, I think that's something we can discuss when we get into our budget discussions uh, uh, later this year. So on those two budget related items, uh, is anything else anybody wanna say about it? I just wanna note. As Dan, we just kinda note the correspondence we get, we don't have, we don't.
Fergel's suggestion was a good one, however, I don't think a thousand dollar difference, which is. Where they provide uh, notes on the school budget.
Right.
Is an adequate number, I think that's gotta be significantly.
Higher, and we have a many more accounting lines, I think, than the school has as well. Something else, but we can talk about it as a board later on. And the last one, I think that was from Charles, right? Charles Hastings, that's the other one I was thinking about?
Oh, Ken Ackley.
Oh, oh, no, there's, I see there were four, because you.
I'm sorry, I forgot about Charles.
Let me, before I go to uh, before I go to uh Ken Ackley's email, uh, uh, Charles uh recommended that uh. We expand the Conservation Commission to the.
It's not an expansion, it's a, it's a vacancy.
Well, there's two things he asked for. Yeah, he asked for us to uh approve a vacancy for, uh, filling a vacancy on, on.
The alternate.
On the alternate for Lubitz.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's fine, and we can vote on uh.
He's incorrect going from six to seven.
Well, that's what I wanted.
There, there are seven.
There are seven already on it.
Regular members.
Right.
Yeah.
We could increase by one alternate potentially, I think.
No, there is a vacancy in the alternate.
It's just a vacancy, okay, so he was correct in what he said.
So the town has adopted a seven person or conservation commission.
With.
Mission with three alternates.
Right.
We currently only have two alternates.
Okay, I misread him, I, I thought he said it was, we could have up to four alternates, but. It doesn't, it's not something we can take action on, because that's a town meeting vote, if we were to change the number of.
Yes.
The number of uh spots, positions on the conservation commission, so it's just to uh. Approve Cliff Lubitz as an alternate to the Conservation Commission, and this is fill an alternate.
To fill a vacant.
A vacant alternate position, I will make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, and uh, the last one is from uh Ken Ackley.
Yeah.
Uh, it was a a rather extensive email, um. He uh was not happy with uh the amendment that passed, the uh anti discrimination. Uh, amendment that passed, anti harassment, anti discrimination passed, uh, and he would like the board to call a special town meeting. To discuss it further. He had a number of questions that he wanted answered in the matter. Um. I am very much not in favor of a special town meeting on this issue. I think the discussion at the. At the town meeting, um, frankly, uh, proved the point of Margaret Turner, whom, who um. Who made an amendment that that failed, uh, that this could be a very divisive. And insulting discussion uh for a lot of people. And I think uh, there's something called the law of unintended consequences. And I, uh, for the proponents of that amendment, I think that's perhaps what happened in this case. The unintended consequence was the vote was approximately sixty forty, and I don't think that's what they were looking for. Or turn, for a town support for an anti discrimination or anti harassment, I think they were looking for a much larger uh approval. So I would just uh, uh, not uh, go forward with a board sponsored. Special town meeting, I wanted to get that on the record for, since Ken did send us an email on the matter. Ken, Ken does have the right as a resident to petition a special town meeting. And if he'd like to do that, I think if he just come in and talk to Mark, uh, I think it's price fifty five, it's cries.
I'll give him.
A number of signatures, and then we will go through the process, the board will, will uh. Uh, follow through on, on the, on the petition uh, for a sound, for a town meeting, so I don't know what you guys wanna say about it.
Yeah, I would agree with your statement.
Okay, alright, I think, I think then that's all the. Alright, thank you. Alright, that takes care of the correspondence. Non-public session?
Yes.
Finally getting towards the end, or not?
Yep.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is uh, in accordance with ninety one A. Uh, for a legal.
A legal matter.
Legal matter and uh, a uh reputation matter.
A reputation matter, alright, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Kristen, let us know when we're off of both uh, video. Videos, and uh, I see several staff members is.
Uh, yes, we need.
Okay.
A couple of the staff members.
Yep.
No.
Are you gonna make a motion to go off to non-public?
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion, thank you, Kristen, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public, to discuss matters uh, reputational and legal. All in favor?
Aye.